Good evening, and welcome to the Selectman's meeting for Thursday, April 23rd, 2015. The agenda tonight is approval of minutes, questions from the public, appointment of the police chief, discussion of House Bill H. 3319 regarding veteran services and items not anticipated within 48 hours of the meeting. We'll do the approval of minutes, and then we're going to go right to why I think everyone is here.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 9, 2015, as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go right to the appointment of the police chief. And first, I'd like to introduce who needs no introduction.
Oh, thank you.
Chief Mike Pereno has a few words to say.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Regardless of the vote here tonight, my decision to pursue an investigation as to the author of the anonymous letters sent to the Selectman's homes last week remains unchanged. The integrity of the Police Department requires it. With the Board's decision to go forward tonight, after speaking to each of you, I'm convinced that you will not let these letters affect your decision. So for the record, I am strongly recommending Deputy Chief Olson to be appointed to the Police Chief for the Hingham Police Department. And that's the end of my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we hope your cold goes away.
Yeah, me too.
Well, we've had several weeks now to review all four candidates, and it took longer than most people might have thought because we have four very good candidates. Each of them would make a wonderful police chief in their own right. What I'm going to do is, since you're all here and took the time to come, before we talk about it, I'll take a few comments from the audience. Not everybody, but otherwise we'd be here until tomorrow. Do we have a couple of people who would like to say something? No?
It's okay.
Well, I'm not going to jump -- I'm not going to take that. Okay, you were given a chance. And I'll open it up. Paul Gallin, do you want to?
I'll defer to Paul if he has something to say first.
I'm ready to make a motion.
We read it in the paper, I believe, today.
I move to appoint Glenn Olson as Chief of Police, Hingham Police Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think there's some pretty happy people here, especially one mom. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the Board of Selectmen for having the confidence and the faith in me to proceed to be the next Hingham Police Chief. It's an awesome responsibility, and I know, after watching these interviews, I know that there's three great candidates that are out there that have plenty of knowledge and great ideas. They're also devoted to this town, and I think that I am really going to be looking at those other candidates, John, Dave, and Sean, to help me in leading this department into the future. We have a great bunch of guys in the department. I think it's the best department in the entire world. The guys are outstanding.
Now, you can relax a little.
And I'd also like to thank everybody here for showing up. Thank you.
Yeah, you can relax a little.
I think so, yeah, yeah. I have one more thing. I got seven days to get ready for Mike's retirement, and I want that retirement to be the best possible because he deserves it.
We think he does, too.
Second.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
This went quicker than we thought. We've got the discussion of the House Bill 3319, and the Veterans Council is set to join us.
Would you like to take a small recess?
Why don't we take a small recess because they won't be here till, like, 7:15, 7:30? We thought this would take maybe a half an hour. So let's take a little bit of a recess. Excellent.
The next agenda item is going to be the discussion of House Bill 3319, which has significant negative impacts on our veteran services. And Mr. Claypool, are you and perhaps Mr. Ramsey, who would you like to have come up and talk about this?
I'll be happy to, ma'am.
Come on up. And perhaps either you or Ted could give us an overview of the bill, potential bill. Hopefully, it will not see the light of day.
Sure, Jim.
That is our hope, and Ted, go right ahead.
An overview of the bill, and I'm not sure I'll be the best salesman for it. As you know, I've taken a position on it personally already. But the bill calls for the consolidation of the entire state into 25 districts with one district veterans agent appointed to handle the entire Commonwealth. And for a variety of reasons, I can talk about why that won't work, but I'd like to hear the Veterans Council.
And what we're dealing with here is the veteran's services that are provided through the town for all of our veterans that live in town. So, Mr. Claypool.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. The Veterans Council has taken a very strong position in opposition to this bill. I would synopsize it by expanding Ted's remarks by saying what essentially happens here is that a consolidation effort has been introduced into the House to consolidate the efforts put forth by the 300 and some cities and towns who have veterans agents to, as Ted said, 25 districts. So it elevates the personal services that our veterans agent can deliver to the clients, if you will, of this town to a higher level of bureaucracy. And we who have been close to this issue know that the veterans agent of this town specifically, I can't speak for other towns, but Hingham and Cohasset, it's absolutely mandatory that this person have close association with those people who run into difficulties in their life. We have some 2,500 veterans in Hingham, and I would tell you that 95 percent of those veterans do not require assistance from any quarter. But there may be 25 or 30 that have problems. And those 25 or 30, we have a national conscience to treat them with the importance that they deserve and to look after their needs, and that's what our veterans agent does here in this town. And sometimes it calls for 2:00 in the morning, visit to somebody's house. It requires filling an oil tank that's empty in the middle of the winter. It requires a whole variety and a whole spectrum of support issues that are not otherwise available, in our view, if the service level is consolidated to a higher level of bureaucracy. The council did indeed, a few minutes ago, unanimously pass a resolution, which, if you wish, I will be happy to read, otherwise with the consent of the board out, we'll just introduce it into the record, but it substantially asked the Board of Selectmen to oppose this bill with all vigor, to convey that message to Garrett Bradley, other members of the House, and the chairman of the board, not the board, the chairman of the committee who will hear the bill, and the members of that committee yet unnomed by Garrett Bradley's office this afternoon.
Why don't you read that?
I'll be happy to.
See, I'm not even going to make you read it.
And I'll be happy to give you a copy, so you don't necessarily need to. Whereas the Veterans Council, the town of Hingham, has reviewed House Bill Number 3319 in its entirety, and whereas the Veterans Council, as well as both the Hingham interim and permanent veterans agent, find House Bill Number 3319 to be fatally flawed since its passage and implementation would greatly downgrade the current veteran's service support of veterans and their dependents by the following. Number one, eliminate institutional knowledge of the town's veterans through the decades of veterans agents appointed from within the town of Hingham and the community who intimately understands the veterans' individual backgrounds and the circumstances and who they are answerable to, the veterans agent is answerable to the Board of Selectmen of the town of Hingham. Number two, eliminating the veterans agent ability to proactively monitor the safety and well-being of local elderly veterans, particularly during extended periods of hardship, such as the successive snowstorms that we had this past winter, which prevented some elderly veterans from leaving their homes to resupply themselves with food and prescriptions. Number three, by eliminating ongoing local outreach by the veterans agent to elder services, Linden Ponds, and the entire Hingham veterans community through visits and presentations to increase awareness of the benefits earned by veterans by which they and others are ignorant, for which they are otherwise ashamed to apply. Eliminating, this is number four, eliminating the quick response and close collaboration at all hours, day and night, between Hingham Police Department, the Fire Department personnel, and the veterans agent when a veteran is in difficulty or needs support. So therefore, the Veterans Council would ask the Board of Selectmen to, number one, strongly oppose the reduction in the support of the Hingham veterans individuals by saving money with reference to this consolidation effort. Number two, to vote unanimously tonight in opposition to Bill Number, House Bill Number 3319. And number three, we request that the Hingham Board of Selectmen likewise notify all of our representatives and the chairman of the committee who will hear this bill of their opposition to House Bill Number 3319. That's the resolution that was passed unanimously by the Veterans Council, Madam Chairman.
Thank you for all the hard work on this, because this just happened, like within the last couple of months.
Within the last several weeks, Ted is aware of this. It did just happen. I think we ought to commend the Ashburton, was it Ashburton Board of Selectmen who initiated this opposition to this bill? And I would simply summarize by saying that the brother reaches the road where the veterans agent is able to answer a phone call at 2:00 in the morning and respond to a person who's in need, and we have such incidents that occasionally happen in this town. Thank you.
Before I open it up for discussion, Jamie, you were going to bring some numbers, and then we'll open it up for discussion. And introduce yourself.
Jamie Woodsfield, Director of Veteran Services. Thank you. Just to give you an idea of what these numbers would look like for client lists if they did propose 25 districts, you're looking at each office of the 25 districts would be responsible for 15,190 veterans, and those are only the ones that are identified as veterans. And then out of that, there's populations of 269,800 civilians and veterans mixed in, of which some of those are going to be dependents and spouses of veterans. And the coverage, the area square mile coverage of each district, if they were broken up evenly, is going to be about 422 square miles, which is going to significantly hinder the job of a veterans agent.
I think my concern is having our veterans have to travel.
Yeah, travel's going to be the biggest thing. I mean, in town of Hingham here, being located here in Town Hall, there are veterans that are housebound that we would never be able to find if the veterans agent was in a district office, say, in Waymouth or Quincy with the travel times.
Ted, do you want to say something?
I mean, I will tell you that this bill is designed to do just simply one thing. It's designed to, and I understand why the state wants to do this, they have costs they have to manage. Their budget is constantly out of whack, and they're trying to control their Chapter 115 costs. This will do one thing guaranteed. If this legislation was successful, it will reduce the expenditures the state spends on veterans. And I think that that's not the goal, and should not be the goal, of that organization and that practice. Our experience has been, since Bob Havelin, followed by Mike Cunningham, followed by Keith and Jamie, is that, and Jim hit on this very well, veterans by nature are self-reliant-type individuals, and they don't ask for help. We have to go out and find them and help them, and frequently, we're brought in in situations where we have to help when maybe we should have been asked for help earlier, but it requires that outreach effort. All that's gone with the district. They're going to sit there and wait for information to come to them, as opposed to going out there and delivering those services, so.
I would suggest one final thing, Madam Chairman, and that is that the reality of it is that the services that are necessary for these guys who need help has got to be very quick and very responsive because of a personal relationship between the veterans agent and those in his community that he knows are in need of support. And one final thing with respect to the concept of whether or not this would be a cost-saving measure, I would dispute that. I've seen no numbers that would indicate that there would be any reduction in the Commonwealth's veteran services budget with respect to the consolidation effort, other than the fact that the point Ted made, which is that we'll respond to less veterans who need help, and therefore, the 115 funds will be reduced, and that's a faulty way for us to violate our national conscience. Thank you.
I would add nothing other than we have a good program here that supports the soldiers, sailors, Marines, and Airmen Coast Guardsmen.
Don't forget the Coast Guard.
That served our country, and if it ain't broke, you don't need to fix it.
Couple of questions. Who's sponsoring the bill?
The bill is sponsored by a person whose name I do not recall, but a House member has introduced this bill, put it in the hopper, and it is a bill that's in the hopper right now. Garrett's office indicates that it's not yet been assigned to a, what is her name?
The bill's being sponsored out of Third Berkshire District by Tricia Farley Bouvier.
She needs severe career counseling, and I can tell you that.
And I know it's, well, I guess it's early in the process. Is it in particular committee right now?
Well, according to Garrett's office, it hasn't been assigned yet, maybe it has in the last several hours, but we would like the Board of Selectmen to convey its strong opposition to the chairman of that committee, as well as its members, once it's assigned to a committee.
So moved. Sorry. Just let me finish. Sorry. This is important, so I was about to say that it makes really no sense at all to me that somebody, whoever this person is out in Pittsburgh, just maybe to save some money, I haven't heard that officially.
I don't, I've never seen a study that.
I mean, I'm not sure we can blame the state for it either, but it's somebody that's proposed legislation that just, you know, from everything we know and common sense, doesn't make any sense for our veterans, it doesn't make any sense for probably most communities, and it certainly doesn't make sense for us in Hingham and Cohasset. So I want to just be clear that I am very supportive of your efforts and totally opposition, and would be happy to second a motion if someone make it to oppose that House budget. And I would also, to the extent I can, be happy to speak to Garrett and some people I may know in the House to advocate for that, because it's never enough to speak to one if you can, if we can all work together, and I'm sure the veterans are very powerful and very organized, so I have no doubt that the message will be heard up in Beacon Hill.
Well, thank you. I'll suspend my remarks, Madam Chairman, while the board votes.
I'll tell you what, let's see, does anyone else in the audience want to make some comments? No? Excellent. I'm going to second what Jim Claypool said and also what you said. Garrett's office is aware of this and is not looking kindly upon it, which is good, but they would definitely appreciate letters from the board. Would you like to make the motion? Would you like to make a motion?
I wanted to just incorporate by reference Mr. Claypool's remarks in our motion, and I tried to do it in a timely manner, so.
Well, intention. I'll second it if that's the intent.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ted, will you write the letter?
I will.
And the three of us can sign it?
Yep.
Because I already fired off a letter. I was so angry about this thing, I actually did one.
Are we dismissed, Madam Chairman?
Yes, you are dismissed. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Actually, I have some votes, and we're done.
Again, Ted, Ted, another step.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's your help, all you guys down there.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure, we have a couple votes, and.
Brass ring on that one. One in two chance.
Okay, guys, out. I use the gavel very, very.
I never use it, actually, but.
All right, we have two votes for our cable committee for equipment. And Ms. Gannon?
I'm going to move to approve approximately $4,000 for the educational and government channels share of the new higher-capacity HVAC system to be installed in the room that houses the cable TV broadcast equipment on the third floor of Town Hall.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ted, any info on this?
I think it's pretty straightforward. If the public wants to know, this is just to help wire and control the heat in one of the rooms that we keep all the equipment, these two votes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'll move to approve the use of up to $6,500 of cable funds to purchase and install additional equipment in the third floor south and east meeting rooms in Town Hall. The following equipment is proposed to be added to each of these two third-floor meeting rooms. Ceiling-mounted projector, wiring of the feed from this projector to the cable switch panel, pull-down screen, and scan converter.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I was sent, an Aquarian representative was going to be here tonight, but plans changed, and they asked if I would read this award that they just received. For the second year in a row, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection has selected Aquarian to receive an award for its outstanding performance in supplying safe, clean, reliable water to its customers in Hingham, Hull, and North Cohasset. Of the more than 1,700 public water systems in Massachusetts, Aquarian was one of only 28 systems that have been recognized by the Mass DEP Award, which is nice. Ted, any reports? Oh, Mr. Healy.
I'd like to thank the citizens of the town of Hingham with respect to the process that we just went through in the selection of a new chief, and I really appreciate your patience and your support and the input that was provided by those who contacted all of us. I think it was a great selection, and I think it's a very positive step for the town of Hingham. So again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for that. The department's well-served.
Thank you. That was nice. I want to echo what Paul said. I think the process that was developed by David Basler with the essay and the one-hour exercise really added to this, and we're so lucky in Hingham to have these four men apply for the job.
I think that's right. I was happy to speak to many, many residents, some of those ladies this afternoon were calling me, and I would say that the bulk of the calls I was receiving today were for the new chief, and so it was comforting to me and to know that we were going to vote for a man who was so well-respected. And I think it was a tribute for all the people that showed up tonight. I mean, you know, it's, you tend to almost take for granted sometimes that people are going to show up to events or vote, you know, when the vote is coming in, and there's probably very few that are as important as this vote. And to see the crowd that we had in here supporting the new chief was a good feeling all around, and I know we made the right choice.
We have a stack of emails that came through, and I'm not sure if they all came to me as the chair, or they copied the two of you as well.
I read them in correspondence and signed off on them.
Excellent. There were quite a few, and the phone calls and everything else, so it was very wonderful to see citizen participation in this very much. Two more things. Mass Memories Day, Bob, can you pick up the flyer on the stand? And Ted, can you read the dates and time?
Sure. The Mass Memory Roadshow is going to be Sunday, May 17, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here in Hingham Town Hall.
And you'll.
Want me to go on?
Yes.
Because I can give you some more information.
Yes.
So really, I know you're going to talk about the core of the issue, but people are asked to specifically bring two to three unframed photos, prints, digital images, even cellphone images. They're going to scan the images and help you record your memories. Everything will be added to the digital collection, and there's a website, openarchives.umb.edu, if you got that quickly.
More to follow.
Let's repeat.
There is a fantastic Facebook page called Hingham Then and Now that Alan McMillan and Steve Dempsey have been collaborating on, and people have been sending in photos of Hingham, the old days and the new days, and they're absolutely fascinating. There's some I've never, ever seen, and more keep coming. So it's really great. And everybody then puts their personal stories on it. One last thing, Wednesday was Earth Day, and a northern red oak was planted on the Common by the Shade Tree Committee. James Hughes and Dottie Manganaero were there. I want to thank the DPW for digging the hole and planting the tree. It would not have been a pretty picture for us to do that. So for the DPW, Randy Sylvester was there, Jeff Hanrahan, Rob Sweeney, Dan Dempsey, Mike Carlson, and Mike McIntyre. So thank you all very, very much. If, as you drive through and around the Common, if you'll notice, there's now a whole perimeter of trees that are going to be just beautiful. So that's all I have.
And one last thing.
I do too.
Okay, just a reminder, I just wanted to remind everybody that Monday, we have town meeting.
Oh, thank you.
And I think it's important that we all go and exercise our democratic rights, so please come.
Getting back to the whole veterans agent and everything, I think it's important to note that in this day in history, Admiral David Farragut stormed the Mississippi and took the city of Mobile in the Civil War. These are not just abstract events, these form the history. These are today's veterans. I think continuing forward is a good thing to do.
I think that's fantastic, by the way, because, as you know, where I grew up, we have a Farragut Park and a statue that was named after Admiral Farragut.
Absolutely.
So I'm familiar with the man.
Yes.
Thank you, Paul, again.
Yes, I've been there.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.